Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Public衧 Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by the transmitter of this notice of meetings for publication to the Asbury Park Press and to the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of this meeting of the governing body has been posted in the corridor, in the municipal building, and in the office of the municipal clerk. Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Otinda?
Here.
Thank you. Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Excuse.
Thank you.
We'll have a moment of silence and a pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes, October 16th, 2025, work session and the October 16th, 2025 version reading. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Bill Kraft?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe Connor.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Otinda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Special meeting minutes of October 16th, 2025, special meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Bill Kraft?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe Connor.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Stay.
Councilmember Condos?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Otinda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We have ordinances, final reading and adoption of ordinances, 2025-24 amendment of the Bayou Seaside Park and title of property owners use of the verge. Anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
Do you have any comments on this?
Um, thirty, um, anyone from the public, have any comments on this ordinance, 2025-24? I will close the public motion. Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Bill Kraft?
I'll second.
Second by Gina Condos.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Otinda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
With the final reading and adoption of ordinance, 2025-25, amendment chapter four or five, Article Five of the Code of the Bayou Seaside Park and Title of Property Owners Use of the Verge. Anybody else have any comments or questions on that?
No, I think we've talked about that one a few times. It just added the mailboxes to the permissible items.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on the final reading of ordinance, I will close the public portion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. President.
Second, motion by Brianne Field?
Second.
Second by Bill Kraft.
Thank you. Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Otinda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, we have the final reading and adoption of ordinance, 2025-26, amendment chapter 435 and title of vehicles and traffic. Anyone on council have any questions on that?
No, this is just adding another handicap spot for particular residents.
That's it.
Anyone from the public have any comments concerning 2025-26? So, I will close the public motion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Joe Connor?
I'll second.
Gina Condos, second.
Thank you. Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Otinda? Councilmember Otinda?
Yeah, me and Jerry.
Do you have a motion?
Jerry.
I heard some squealing noises. Is that right? Sounds like it's from outer space. It's more of the world's. That's the old noise, flying saucers. Jerry, Jerry's out in outer space. It's more of the world. That's right.
Uh, that's okay.
Chair, do you have a motion? We have a motion.
On the, I'm sorry.
Please, please, okay.
Uh, just waiting for your vote on the final ordinance.
2025-26 amendment chapter 435 and title of vehicles and traffic.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We have payment and claims, 2025-345, approving payment authorized claims as set for it on the check registered bill list for the period of October 17th, 2025 to November 6th, 2025. Does anyone on council have any questions on that bill list? Just motion?
Yep.
And do anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second, Mr. Mr.
I have a motion on the floor, but Joe Connor, second by Ryan Field.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes, but I have a stay on one item over a check to myself for reimbursement for the opportunity to recharge.
Thank you. Councilmember Otinda?
You bet.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
There are resolutions, twenty, uh, three, four, six, authorizing acceptance of a low-speed vehicle. Three, four, seven, authorizing relative or relic engineering to provide professional engineering services for construction management and inspection service for K Street gain rate project improvements. Three, four, eight, authorizing reimbursement of designated road and sewer utility accounts. Three, four, nine, designating a handicap parking space on the street for private residents. Three, five, zero, authorizing the execution of a change order number one to the contract between the Bayou Seaside Park and Black Rock Enterprises for stock delivery roadway improvements. Authorizing the renewal of a shared service agreement with Ocean County for the drug recognition expert call-out program, FY2025/2026. Three, five, two, authorizing the renewal of a shared service agreement with Ocean County for the driver while intoxicating enforcement program, FY2025/2026. Authorizing a higher of skated software, software maintenance service through the competitive contracting process. Three, five, four, authorizing membership and participation in the national purchasing partnership, MPP GO, National Purchasing Cooperative Pricing System. Appointing, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control, appointing, I'm sorry, three, five, five, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control. Three, five, six, appointing a claim, claim certificate policy for 2025. And three, five, seven, authorizing the execution of a change order number one to the contract between the Bayou Seaside Park and Brooklyn Construction for the Broadway construction of phase one. Does anyone on council have any questions?
No. It's good, Mark.
Does anyone from the public have any questions on the resolution that are listed on the Please, panel.
Michelle Miller, 1500 Lake Avenue. I kind of like have a two-part question about resolution three, four, seven, or more about the Remington and Vernick. I understand Remington and Vernick are for construction and for the land part, but we seem to be still behind on bayfront projects, and Remington and Vernick are involved in that. It's like, how much money have we spent on different surveys for them, and we're not getting anywhere? You know, I don't see any progress.
This is a specific rule of resolutions.
Okay, so Remington and Vernick are specialized in land issues and the roadway improvements, right?
That's what we chose.
They're all, we send it out for proposals.
Okay. Thank you.
We branch it out to all of our engineering firms that are listed on January that we have.
I guess, you know, it's just a question, we keep on using them, and I can understand for roadway, and we've, you know, included them on whatever proposals, but it's like, it's my understanding that they are the experts for roadway and land use, so whatever their requirements or their, you know, certificates, that this is appropriate for that, for the roadway improvements. Okay. I'm glad K Street is getting it, they need it. My extra comment is, please don't forget Lake Avenue.
Thank you. Does anyone else?
Eddie Klein, 48 Eleventh Avenue. My question is, why is one spot for handicap parking in front of a house in an ordinance, and another one is in a resolution? What's the difference?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, for handicap spots that are on Route 35, because that's a state road, they have to do a traffic regulation order, and in order for them to do a traffic regulation order, they request that the town does a resolution in support of it, but we still approve that by ordinance as well. Just for their, their process, they need a resolution of support.
Okay, the other question I have on that is, I'm reading this, it says such spaces are for a vehicle owned by the handicapped person or another occupant of the residence who is a member of the immediate family of the handicapped person. So, am I reading that, that if, let's just say, it's a husband and wife, and he is handicapped, and they have the space, and the son, that car is, I don't know, in the shop, wherever, and the son comes to visit, and so he can park in that spot?
As long as the package on that vehicle.
Well, how can you put a placard for a handicapped vehicle, Berisha? Is a placard issued to the person or the vehicle?
The person.
The person. So, that would mean that if the son is going to take his father somewhere, but if he's just coming for the weekend, he still can just put the placard in his car and leave it there? That doesn't seem right.
Well, you know, you're making, then we'd be making assumptions of what they're going to be doing. I don't think we can do that.
Shouldn't be doing that.
Thank you, Bill.
When they apply, they apply by the placard.
Talk to you later.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public have any questions on the resolutions? I'll close the public portion. Um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, approving both.
I have a motion by Gina Condos.
I'll second it.
Joe Connor, second.
Thank you. Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmett Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
I do accept, I, I, sorry, I'm on three, forty-six, I'm staying.
Thank you. Councilmember Otinda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Does anyone on council have any comments?
I was just gonna, a couple things, I just want, none of them are, you know, resolution-type things. One, to say thank you to everybody who came out to the Scarecrow Contest, I think, or wasn't really a contest, I think we'll call it a parade or something next year, I think we kind of misnamed, but I think that was a success, we put up, I think, I don't know how many posts up there, fourteen? I think we filled, yeah, I think we filled ten of them, and it was fun, I think everybody had a good time. I know people were asking the last time about, you know, committee meetings, I have a bunch of them, I think we have a full calendar over the next couple of weeks, so we have a meeting with the Recreation Committee coming up on the 12th, so hopefully we'll have something to report after that. There's also a follow-up meeting with the Board of Ed, that's coming up next Friday, I think, on the 14th. As I've reported before, we've been waiting for them to get back to us with a proposal, and we haven't received that yet, so this is a follow-up to that session. I think we might have mentioned it, but only because I was looking at my calendar. On December 2nd, there's also a celebration at the Effershores Library, which benefits all of us on the Barrier Island, celebrating their 30th anniversary, so that's coming up, if you'd like to attend that. And I don't know if you were going to mention the two listening sessions, do you want to mention those, do you want me to say the dates?
Please.
So, we have two public listening sessions that the consultants that we've hired to give us all of the information so that we can do our due diligence for the potential annexation of Berkeley South Sea Side Park. One of them's on November 10th, and one of them's on November 24th, I think the first one's at 6:00 PM, and the second one's 6:30. And those will be held here in council chambers and facilitated by that group, and I believe Jean Cipriani, our attorney for that. So, it's, you know, council will be listening as well as anybody else who would like to come and share their input. So, those are just some dates that I wanted to mention.
That's a, the tenth of just Monday, it's like.
Yeah, Monday is coming Monday, yeah.
This is one of my last meetings in the borough. I'd like to thank the Teesville Seaside Park, it was my honor to serve the people in Seaside Park, it was my honor to serve with the esteemed board, and I'm very pleased to pass the torch to my good friend, Joe Tope. I will never do a good job. Thank you. Unfortunately, I understand that young lady, but I have a boss. She wants to go to Florida. Can I say something?
Yeah, call in.
There's a lot of things to go to divorce court with, but that's not one of them.
I have, I mentioned something about the Marina Committee that about two weeks ago with three of our engineering firms, we had three separate meetings. This is in regard to the total reconstruction of the Marina that involves roughly 2,300 lineal feet of bulkheads, all of the finger piers, electricity, water, the whole, the entire reconstruction. Wouldn't change anything about the existing office and bathhouse that is there, it's just the Marina proper that will be done. We're waiting for estimates to come in from the three engineering firms for what their price will be to, to work up all of the design, as well as their estimates and how much the project will be.
No, just an idea to that, the project will not be done, will be done in phases. There's a very short window of time that the construction can take place, so it has to be broken up in phases. We believe within three phases or maybe more.
Yeah, we're hoping to start the first one, the December, beginning of December of next year, 2026, and of course, it would need to be completed for that phase by March 31st, because Marina opens on April 1st. So, there's, there will be at least two or three phases, most likely three, the way I see it right now. And that's all.
And the funds would come out of the Marina?
Yes, yes, this is coming out of the Marina Utility, all of it, does not come out of any taxpayer payments, taxes. So, everything basically is shouldered on the, the slip holders, basically.
Anyone else?
I'll read my report, Public Works Committee's status report, board book update. As of 10/31, parking drive was 35% complete, trailer was 30% complete, and deck was 15% complete. The overall project is approximately 37% complete and slightly ahead of schedule for late January, early February completion. Park Lot's 1203 anticipated, anticipated bid date is December 15th, 2025, awarded in January 2026, with construction to commence spring of 2026. Construction cost now estimated to be, to be 2.3 million, financing through the I Bank with the potential of $2,000, $2 million in principal forgiveness. We have some internal projects, the construction office issued 75 toll permits in October, total of $19,886, 105 subcode inspections were performed, the netty run passed, and 24 required re-inspections. And also, just to add, the, it's getting to be that time of the year that the rental inspections will be going out sometime in December for next year, so they're also, they're already prepping, working on that. Phase one of Park Central has started, it will consist of custom benches and payers, payers installation began today. The questions we have identified, a vendor for the parking rooms that they have to be, they had to apply for the New Jersey BRC, the Business Registration Certificate. Once the BRC is posted to the state website, we can place the order. Storm drains on Bayview Avenue are the responsibility of Ocean County, calls were made out, the virtue department has been out for all the damage, and the storm drains have been cleaned more than once, I mean, they don't spend, I mean, the final week of the storm, I know they're out there cleaning them. The borough has been investing in our new water and sewer infrastructure since 2010, and that time we have saved an outage of 469,225 per year to the Ocean County Utility Authority. Fees on March 1st, 2014, water and sewer rates were reduced to the current rate due to the savings. The side streets of Brighton to Porter between Central and Ocean are the only remaining streets that need to be upgraded. Verizon, this is good news, I know everyone's been waiting for this. Verizon has filed a notice that the BU of their intention provide fire escape or television service to Seaside Park. Verizon did provide a timeline, did not provide a timeline of when the service would be available to Seaside Park residents. I assume notice will go out, we'll probably get for honors or something to that effect, but we have been notified. Another small report.
Anyone else on council? Anyone from the public, I'll open it to the public.
Alan Motley, 1450 Street. I know we're having a presentation next Monday, are the firm that you hired, are they going to give handouts to the audience? Are they bringing handouts?
No. No, this is questions, this is a listening session, they're going to listen to your questions.
They're gathering, so they haven't, they haven't completed their study.
It's a listening session, they're going to listen to comments and questions, their questions, concerns and questions.
I wasn't aware of that, I thought it was.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't received any, I think we've talked about it at a prior meeting, people had asked, like, well, when do we get to give our input? Because I think there was a question about, did it have to go out to vote? And the answer was, no, it doesn't, that the council ultimately needs to decide, but one of the steps of the process that they have to complete is to get input from residents, so it'll be two sessions, one on Monday, and then the one on the 23rd.
Then, then after that, when they
Have to pull everything.
Put together all the information, they'll come back to us?
Be a public here.
And then present it to the public?
It has to be a public here, yes. It's a massive job, Alan, all the data and things they're trying to put together, present, so, yeah.
So, bring your questions then.
Yes, great question.
Hi, Holly Byrne, 18 Brighton, I'm going to piggyback what Al said. I think the way it's represented, and thank you, Evi, for putting it in taxpayers' newsletters, people are thinking that it's a listening session, meaning we're going to go and listen to what you have to say to us. I don't think they understand it's a Q and A kind of thing, so can that be publicized or, or put out there somehow, some way?
It's not a Q and A, it's a, it's a community listening session, so it's a consultant's listening to the community. That's why it's called a community listening session.
Okay, so we can then ask questions and inquire and bring our concerns.
Yeah, they, they are very interested.
I'm representing a whole bunch of people tonight, that's, the interpretation is that it's not, it's that it's passive, we're going to sit and listen to what they have to say, meaning a listening session.
No, they're listening to the residents.
Can you read what it says, and maybe we can put something out?
Can that be worded then, so it's a little more clear?
Well, I'm asking Jenna what it says on the right thing.
The notice says the purpose of both special meetings is to hold community listening sessions to allow the public an opportunity to provide feedback on the proposed annexation of South Sea Side Park.
So, the public will be allowed to, to speak on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, the way a lot of times it was interpreted was it was a listening session, we're going to listen to what they have to say. Okay, all right, thank you.
The brief presentation is just a summary of what the situation is and what the summary of the process, basically, and then it's open to the public to provide their feedback and ask questions and.
Public meaning South Sea Side residents too, South Sea Side Park residents. Any stakeholder, anybody who wants to.
Gertrude Martin, 12 North Bayview Avenue. Before I have my questions or comment, congratulations to Gina and Joe, I'm sure they're looking forward to it. In reference to the county doing storm drains, and I know Bayview's a county road, and I believe I Street for all these years we've assumed, unfortunately, and they did a beautiful job putting drains in down I Street, unfortunately, and maybe I wasn't here, every puddle that ends up on Central floods on the corner of I on both sides, north side and south side, it can be dry all over town, and I don't know if they have not, as far as I've seen, pumped or cleaned out those two drains at all. So, I don't know, do I, I don't know who the liaison is on council to tell me who to write to or call for the county?
Well, it's on record, you just said it, we'll have the Borough Administrator file through tomorrow to check.
Yeah, I called the county after that first storm, and they were out the next day, so I'll call them tomorrow to see if they've gotten to the storm drains on I Street.
We watch them go past every morning. Huge truck.
Yeah, we do follow up on it.
Some of the residents said that too, and I was getting ready to call the county back, they said, oh, wait, no, they just came back, and they did it, so I don't know what their process is, but I have a direct line to the director of that department, Rose Department.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, it's flooding constantly.
Absolutely.
Second thing is, as Alan asked, and Holly, my question is, since it is Seaside Park, taxpayers basically paying for the study as far as South Sea Side, and you do represent us, and I know it's a public meeting, anybody can come, but to ask questions, will it just be Seaside Park residents?
No, it's up to the public.
Public meeting.
For both, both towns.
Anyone?
No, I know it's a public, anybody can come, but I didn't know if, like, somebody could come in here and stand up with questions like myself?
Yes, somebody come in from Thomas River and ask questions.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize. Okay, sounds good.
Take your time.
You will get over here tonight, don't worry. There's an evacuation sign in front of our house, and I did take a picture of it in every ugly storm we've had. in every ugly storm we've had, I have. We were always thought to believe it was when Fort the River was up and running as far as nuclear. Since that is not in operation, is it for nuclear evacuation, which we don't have anymore, or is it for town evacuation, which in that sense is really scary because you can't use the road when we have a problem? So.
Okay, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
And we were looking to that?
Thank you.
I don't, does anyone have the, does anyone have?
Evacuations for any emergency, any emergency. Any emergency where you have to evacuate, that's the purpose of the evacuation.
Then it's really ironic.
Any emergency.
It's a poorly placed.
Well, they don't want you to wait until you're flooded out. They want you to leave before you're flooded out.
Well, that's not always possible.
No, you're right.
If the flood comes during the night.
But it's for any emergency declaration to evacuate. That's the rule.
Okay, well, noon has to be found. We have even asked fire, police chiefs, to come and sit on our porch during the summer. And I only bring this up now, it is only an issue really during the summer, that for every street we have in Seaside Park, before you enter Bayview, there is a stop sign. People are very used to cars having to stop. That's not the case on High Street. There is no stop sign. And I don't know, again, if that's a county issue, but it's certainly a safety issue. During the summer, when you have little kids and people walking, they expect the cars to stop. And I know they're supposed to because of the walkway.
Okay.
They don't. It's unfortunate. We have seen, not this past summer, but other summers, people have, bikes have took over because cars got so close to, really scary. So if you'd like to join us anytime during the summer, you're welcome. Okay? Oh, one other thing, and it has to do with, I guess, the reconstruction or work that will be done on the boat marina. You do have cameras as far as safety and security for the marina. Everything's there, the electricity, whatever. If they could put another one that faces Bayview or picks up part of that, I mean, it would be really a safety issue for first aid responders that might head down that block and already find it blocked off. For the police to immediately know that there's flooding, to put up a sign at the end of the streets that you can't come down, I don't know if that's a possibility. And it would allow people to also, for the few osprey, attempt to nest in that nest.
So we are in the process of putting a camera there, so, so on top of the marina building, so people can view the sunsets, the osprey nests.
It's already done.
We're just waiting on a port right now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So it'll face out?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds great.
It'll be similar to our beach webcam, only be the face sign.
That's been requested from residents, so that we move forward on that. I did, we did need that, I just didn't realize. I got it, I've been looking for it myself.
Sorry, missed the request.
That's quick, please.
This one is kind of different. In South Seaside, they have a snow fence on the west side of where the few trees they have are placed. Whether it helps or not, I don't know, because usually it would be during a very bad storm. It's just a snow fence, but it's on the west side of the vegetation that's left and it's
Okay, yeah, it is.
You're familiar?
I'm very familiar with it.
I don't know if the same thing can be done where we have vegetation that's left, that's eroding away very quickly. Probably more so at the north end there than the south by the boat, by the hot club. It's very, it's thick, it's flourishing, but just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
One other thing.
Thanks, Kurt. Good. Let it, let it rip, Kurt.
I mentioned it last year at council meeting. It is not you, it is the utility poles that are tipping. I know you have a problem with one, there's going to be a problem with a lot more. It's not up to you unless you can, right, and really hound the utility company to take action. It's, it's really scary and disgraceful. But I thank you for listening. I have done.
Thank you. Thanks, Kurt. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Andy Chuck, 1807 North Bayview. Last week, I sent the mayor and council a letter. I hope you all got a chance to read it and understand what our situation is on North Bayview. That's the area between Stockton and Barragut and pretty much all the way down to Decatur as well. Something needs to be done with regards to when we have these torrential rains, that somebody be notified, either send a police car up and stop the traffic from coming in. It's, it's a hazard to the people, it's a hazard to the properties. And we've had substantial flooding on our property, a lot of dirt, a lot of mess, gaps and booths. Cars come around that bend, they see the flood, they do two things. They drive through at 40 miles an hour, or they turn around and go back the wrong way down the road with traffic coming out. And the last storm, I watched two cars miss each other by six inches. Because one guy was backing up and the other guy came flying around the bend. And my wife called the police at roughly 2:30, took 45 minutes before the cops showed up and closes the road. I mean, it's, it's the state highway at that point as well. I don't know whether that has anything to do with it, but there should be something done, you know, get some, just proactive, have somebody come up there, at least check the road. You put signage out along the bay to stop the flooding, everyone is going to recover. Something should be done up there. It's just, it's a hazard. And I don't know if anyways, had any comments, want to ask any questions?
No, I'm familiar with, I went up there during the flooding and I did fill up after the flooding and I am familiar with your, with the issue up there.
It's the third time this year. And, I mean, I know, you know, the work was done on Stockton, that, that street flooded as well. I mean, neighbors' cars have been, you know, damaged over there.
Yes.
It just seems like, since that work on Stockton done, we've had two storms that have caused the flood. I was told that work that was done had nothing to do with, but it's just kind of strange. That work was done, we've had two floods since then. The water just doesn't go down. This last storm, the water didn't go down until 10 o'clock at night. Normally, it's, you know, immediately as it rains stops, everything drains, it settles and it's gone, but this time it's not. And also notice, you mentioned about this cleaning the sewers along Central. Are they, sorry, they're working their way back out of the causeway and heading out 35. Are they going to come back around and do that section? Because as of
That's two different, the county has their own crew. The state is doing something, I don't know what the state has been doing on, on the highway.
On Central?
They've also sent cameras down and everything, so I'm not familiar with that project.
Yeah, nobody's, I just wonder if they, you know, if anybody can find out if they're going to come back around and do our screen. It's like, it seems maybe that's part of the problem as well, maybe those sorts of blocks with debris and sand and what have you.
I did, we, we emailed and I did speak to a board administrator and we are not done doing our investigation.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Denise Chuck, 1807 North Bayview. Just to follow up with my husband, what he said, I didn't hear a response. Will you be proactive and put something in place that when the rain comes that heavy, that fast, that somebody will take a look down that way and stop the traffic before it causes additional damage and safety issues to our property and people?
I mean, I can answer that. You're not going to like my answer.
Okay.
The proactive part of it, because of the way that's set up, the state road, we have to physically put an officer at that cut through because it confuses everybody as soon as you block that off. So you actually need an officer sitting there telling people, hey, you need to go up, because you also understand Seaside Heights is flooded. Seaside Heights is pushing their cars towards us, we're pushing them out. Cars are just circling around. So you physically, let me finish. You physically have to tell each person coming in, cut through, go down to CBS and come up Ocean Avenue. That's the only route that was available. So I have one officer doing that. I have one officer, when you curl around into Bayview, leaving town, I know an officer there. I had a third officer who was directing school buses letting off kids, getting them through the water because they had to go the wrong way, so they had a car going lights and sirens. I have no other officers at that. I was answering calls as the chief of police, I have no other people. You can't just put cones out there, can't just put barricades out there. The state usually comes and they put their own barricade trucks out there. They were so backed up, they had no truck to give us. That was the situation. The water came up so fast, there is no proactive, you reride that constantly. My guys are looping that 50 times a shift. There is no, even on Bayview, we wait till the water's, oh, it's coming up. Hey, Public Works, put out the barricades. We don't put out the barricades. So it's never been a, hey, let's anticipate the day before, because honestly, that bad of a flooding, it hasn't happened in probably a year and a half. So it's not that super common where it floods that badly on Central Avenue. Now, years ago, it did, it flooded all the time. So to proactively, I got to take almost all my officers off the road. I can't cone it and I can't barricade it. You have 18-wheelers, you have delivery trucks, people don't know what to do. So you actually have to physically have officers sitting there stopping each person, hey, you must go back through the heights, CBS, back up Ocean Avenue. People don't always know that. So the barricades, that's when you get people spinning around, trying to go, where do I go, where do I go? And honestly, if I didn't have a Class 1, I wouldn't have had enough officers doing that. Like I said, my, I was end up answering calls, we still have to answer calls, we had wires down, we had other calls. I only have a couple officers on at a time. Cones and barricades just won't cut people, will just blow through them. You physically have to have an officer there. I only have two or three at a time.
Yes, you know?
Yes.
Okay. You have a flashing sign that we post when areas are closed. Can't you move that sign where mansions comes into Seaside Park, alerting people, roads flooded, you're seeing straight into the heights?
We put up barricades all the time.
I'm not saying the barricade, I'm saying the sign telling people what's going on.
Well, to physically move that sign, it takes quite a bit. And again, I'm taking another car that I don't have to put up a sign. And the state doesn't want you putting up barricades wherever. They will normally bring a barricade truck and they will do it. Otherwise, you have to physically have an officer telling people where to go because they get confused. Because again, you have Seaside Heights, they're flooded, they're just telling people go to Seaside Park. We're telling, you can't come through Seaside Park. So now they're getting frustrated. You have to physically tell them, this is the route you must go.
Okay, so my question then would be, what's the solution? How do we protect the safety of our residents and how do we further protect our property when these situations arise?
As soon as the water, we were advised of the water getting that high, and it came up quick, so.
I agree with you, it did come up quick.
As soon as that water came up, we had three officers, just in that little tiny train. That's all I had on. I had no other officers to go answer calls. Instead, one of my officers had to escort three school buses to get kids home because they had to take them the wrong way down one-way streets to get them home. I ended up answering calls, which is unusual, but I'm going to do it. I just only have so many officers. You can't just plop out barricades, it just, it won't work.
I, I understand that, but again, I'm going to say, what do we do to protect the safety? People turning around, going the wrong way on the road, flooding happening that makes situations that is causing damage.
You have to manually put a car out there. People are always going to blow past, you can't stop every single person from going through. We put up those barricades in Bayview every single flood, every single time that people blow past them. It, it, that's why you have to physical cars with people giving directions.
I think you've answered it multiple times.
Well, and I've questioned it multiple times, how do we protect the safety of people?
The chief did answer your question.
I'm not satisfied with the answer. I don't think that's an answer.
You have to accept as an answer because he gave you the answer.
It's not an answer. It's not, it's not a solution to the problem. I called police, let me finish that. I called the police twice, took over 45 minutes for somebody to come there. We stood out in the driveway to try to direct people ourselves. So it's not a quick response when this happens. And I realize we're not the only name in town. There were other things going on, we realized that, but when it does happen that fast, that quick, there are issues that need to be addressed.
Well, you just answered your own question and I wanted to interject.
Move it out there.
In a short amount of time.
One thing, since the mid-'90s, there was a project on the books for DOT to straighten out the highway into Central, tank closure of North Bayview.
You were correct.
That project was done, this would be an issue.
And you were correct.
You're right.
I was going to say that. I was going to wait until we, go ahead. Okay.
Michelle, 1500 Lake Avenue. We had questions about reverse 911. That could be an answer, at least for us residents. We, somebody questioned that it wasn't available. I knew that it was, you know, and Karen even responded to it. I went on that link and entered, you know, information, which basically, I know I did this probably 10 years ago. When a flood comes that bad, why can't we have a reverse 911 warning the residents to avoid that and to go to CBS, you know, because the flooding's so bad?
All right, thank you for your comment. We'll move it back.
80-48, 11th Avenue. I would like to congratulate Gina and Joe.
Thank you, Edie.
Look forward to another year. Secondly, I want to thank the council for the Scarecrow event. I think it was great. It's, it's one of those things that is a small town, wonderful thing, and hopefully in the future it will expand. And just to comment on what Holly was saying about the listening session, what it says is, and I'm reading, these sessions will include a brief presentation and open public comment. So I think maybe Jenna had mentioned, or somebody had mentioned, perhaps some kind of clarification could go out because, believe me when I tell you, people think that this firm is going to come in and say stuff. And obviously, based on what we've heard tonight, that's not really the case. So I think it would be whom everybody's best interest to clarify that somewhat.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, Edie, thanks.
Okay. The board closed the public portion. Should we have motion?
Make the motion, Mr. President.
Free trial?
Pleasure.
Free trial, yes.
Right, right, yes.
First.
Second.
Councilmember Enfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Attenda?
Yes.
Councilmember President Wohl?
Yes.